Good evening. I'd like to call to order February twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty five Canton Township Regular Board Meeting at seven P M. Can we all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk Seeger, can you please take roll call?
All right, trustee Ansari.
Good evening.
Trustee Berninski.
Good evening.
Treasurer Slavens.
Good evening.
Supervisor Graham Hudak.
Good evening.
And look at the record reflect that Clerk Seeger is in attendance. Looks like trustees Ganguly and Foster are both absent.
Thank you. Can I please have a motion to adopt the agenda with the deletion that Senator Dana Polhankey will be coming at a later meeting and not this one?
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to adopt the agenda, removing Senator Polhankey's update from the recognition or from the agenda.
Vote. Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Next item are presentations and recognitions. So Chief Chad, where are you? Would you like to? We have number one, police sergeant promotions recognition. So if you could please come to the front of the room, although we can all turn around and look at them too. Come on, guys.
Either you want him in front or?
Yeah, how about on the front? They don't yet. They didn't give me anything. Oh, my dear. Oh, it's.
You're going to.
You have it? It's. We've. I did find him, Chad, just in case you need some help there. Thank you. Okay, okay. So first we have. Oh, that's true. Okay, that's true. Okay, so Chief Chad is up with his Andrew Kelly, Anthony Johnson, and Jared Peterson. So Andrew Kelly, Anthony Johnson, and Jared Peterson are being recognized tonight for their recent promotion to the rank of sergeant with the Canton Police Department. Andrew was hired as a police officer with the department in two thousand and eight. Anthony was hired as a police officer with the department in two thousand and fifteen. Jared was hired as a police officer with the department in two thousand and sixteen. In their new position as sergeants, they will be responsible for the supervis- for supervising the daily operations of their respective shifts, providing frontline leadership to the road patrol officers. They will also be responsible for overseeing shift investigations, officer development, and performance evaluations, while also receiving administrative assignments and special projects from their lieutenants, working toward the department goal of providing excellence in police service to the Canton community. Congratulations Sergeant Kelly. Congratulations Sergeant Johnson. Congratulations Sergeant Peterson. Okay, don't go too far away. Now we have Andrew Coulthars and Cody Barnes. Come on up.
But we also have Lieutenant Dave Isle.
Okay, great. He's down here. Okay, well, I don't. Well, Mr. Isle, you're gonna have to talk about some things here then. Andrew Coulthars and Cody Barnes are being recognized and Lieutenant Isle. Do you want? Did we have something that we can?
If I can.
Okay, okay, thank you. Are being recognized this evening for their recent promotion to the rank of lieutenant within the Canton Police Department. Andrew was hired by the department as a police officer in two thousand and seven and was promoted to the rank of sergeant in two thousand and nineteen. Cody was hired by the department as a police officer in two thousand and fifteen and was promoted to the rank of sergeant in two thousand and twenty one.
With Lieutenant Isle, I'll speak into the mic here. One of the things I would start off with, he's one of the fastest rising command officers in our department. He rose to the rank of sergeant after a very short stint as a police officer. And again, he's been promoted again to police lieutenant. He's performed many functions, including a long stint at the schools, the public safety, the piece up campus, where he was a school resource officer for at least four years. Then he ultimately supervised that program as a sergeant. And now as a lieutenant, he's performing a role as a shift super- shift commander for us. He's been with us a good amount of time. He has a master's degree from Michigan State University, for you Spartans out there. And he also has an undergrad degree from Michigan State University, so congratulations.
Oh, he had that memorized. Just look at that. What a chief. In their new position, they will serve as platoon shift commanders in the patrol division. They will be responsible for the daily operation of their respective shifts, providing leadership, management, and direction to their sergeants and officers, ensuring that laws are upheld and police services are rendered appropriately. In addition, these upper command positions will take on administrative tasks and special projects assigned by their patrol captain, working toward the department goal of providing excellence in police service to the Canton community. Congratulations Lieutenant Coulthars. Congratulations Lieutenant Burns, and congratulations Lieutenant Isles. Now we have Mr. Johnson. Edward Johnson is being recognized this evening for its recent promotion to the rank of captain with the Canton Police Department. Ed was hired by the department as a police officer in two thousand and two. He was promoted to the rank of sergeant in two thousand and fourteen and to lieutenant in two thousand and nineteen. In his new executive leadership role, Ed reports directly to the chief of police and will oversee the operations of the department's uniform patrol division, dispatch center, and detention facility. He will also be responsible for planning, directing, and reviewing the actions and operations of his assigned division, ensuring compliance with department policies and procedures, analyzing crime trends, and acting as a key leader in the department and the community he proudly serves. Congratulations, Captain Johnson. Okay, now one big picture with the board. You guys stay where you are. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to our officers and their families. Thank you very much. We're very proud of them. They're the best in the state. You don't want to stay for the meeting? Where's everyone going? Sorry, what are you leaving? Thanks for coming. Minutes or didn't?
Self-lost. Oh, and there's software.
I know. All right, thank you. Next, we have a resolution opposing the Salem Township wastewater treatment facility and granting consent to Salem Township to study feasible alternative pathways to construct and maintain a sewer line within the public right-of-way through the township of Canton to connect to the treatment plant of the Ypsilanti Community Utilities Authority in Ypsilanti, Michigan. Should be.
There's.
It should be.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move that the board adopt a resolution opposing the Salem Township wastewater treatment facility and granting consent to Salem Township pursuant to M C L two four seven one eight three subsection one to study feasibility alternative pathways to construct and maintain a sewer line within the public right-of-way through the township of Canton to connect to the treatment plant of the Ypsilanti Community Utilities Authority Y C U A in Ypsilanti, Michigan. Whereas Salem Township has applied to the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy for the permits, authorizing treated water discharge from a wastewater treatment plant in Salem Township to service Salem Township's urban service districts to be located on the west side of Napier Road and the south side of M fourteen with efficient affluent, meeting state water quality standards to discharge into Fellows Creek. Whereas Eagle has issued a part three oh one permit authorizing Salem Township to discharge an estimated daily treated wastewater of several hundred gallons into a tributary to Fellows Creek, and Eagle has advised Salem Township that it intends to issue a part thirty one N P D E S discharge charge permit to allow treated water discharge from the Salem wastewater treatment plant unless a feasible alternative is quickly identified to allow Salem Township to construct and maintain a sewer line within the public right-of-way from Salem Township to the Ypsilanti Community Utility Authority in Ypsilanti through Canton Township, Plymouth Township and Van Buren Township. Let's fix that. Whereas since July one, two thousand and twenty seven, sorry, July one, two thousand and seventeen, Salem Township has leased and reserved wastewater treatment capacity at Y C U A. To ensure that capacity at Y C U A would be available to serve Salem's urban service district when needed by Salem Township, and such reserved capacity continues to be available. Whereas Eagle has always supported the construction of a sewer line to connect Salem Township to Y C U A wastewater plant in Ypsilanti as part of a regional sewer system instead of the construction of a local wastewater treatment facility in Salem Township. Eagle has further expressed that a regional wastewater system, such as a connection from Salem Township to Y C U A, minimizes the impact on the waters and streams of the state. Whereas Salem Township prefers the construction of a sewer line to connect Salem Township to the Y C U A wastewater plant in Ypsilanti as part of a regional sewer system instead of the construction of a local wastewater treatment facility in Salem Township. Whereas Canton Township has expressed severe flooding, has experienced severe flooding in August of two thousand and twenty three along Fowler Creek and Fellows Creek, and additional water capacity from a wastewater treatment plant would aggravate the flooding conditions in residential and commercial areas. Whereas Canton Township has experienced flooding in the southwest corner of Canton, as well along the western section of Canton. A sewer line trench may offer assistance in alleviating with additional pipe drainage. Whereas a sewer line stretch trench may offer assistance in improving broadband access with additional fiber cable on the western part of Canton Township and whereas Canton Township has some residents that may be on septic systems along the sewer line route and connecting to a sewer line would be advantageous to residents and may be required by Wayne County. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton does hereby grant consent to Salem Township pursuant to M C L two four seven point one eight three subsection one to study feasibility alternative pathways to construct and maintain a sewer line within the public right-of-way through the township of Canton to connect to the treatment plant of the Ypsilanti Community Utilities Authority in Ypsilanti, Michigan.
Support. Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by trustee Berninski. So we have a little bit of discussion here before we vote, but this is kind of, I know it was long verbiage there, but basically what's happening in a nutshell is that there was a town hall about a year ago and Salem Township was going to approach to everybody with putting in a wastewater treatment facility, which would have been at the top of Fowler Creek. And as we know, in August of two thousand and twenty three, we experienced severe flooding in Canton Township. Some of it from the, I'm so sorry, it was Fellows Creek. Sorry, Fellows Creek. Fowler Creek is the other one. We experienced severe flooding from there. We did attend the town hall and we suggested that they look for alternative routes to do this versus putting a wastewater treatment facility, which would have dumped another eight hundred gallons of water into the creek. Thus, if we had another rainfall like we did doing the same thing. So this is important and you can see that what we are doing is Eagle is basically about to issue the permit for this wastewater treatment facility. Now Eagle has said they don't want to do this because it's a small treatment facility. However, they, they said they really have no other alternative at this point. And so we met with the different townships and we said, let's offer some alternatives and Clerk Seeger's just read some of the alternatives that we are looking for. So this is basically to study the feasibility of going through Plymouth Township, Canton Township, down to Van Buren Township, over to Ypsilanti Township. And we also added some other things where it could give Canton Township some benefits. And we do know that there's flooding down in the Gettys and Bar area. And so we're looking at maybe while this trench is open, we can add additional piping to maybe divert some of that water away. We also know Treasurer Slavens kind of looked at our community to see how many residents were on septic. And I think we had about sixty on one side and forty on the other, so about a hundred. Some residents are still on septic. So this would alleviate that because we could maybe connect to this sewer pipe. And actually broadband also would be offer us an opportunity to add broadband fiber to that portion of the township. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. But is there any comments or board comments? I know we probably have a lot because this is a hot topic. Clerk Seeger?
I'm gonna talk because I'm trying to make sure that I make sure that the motion works well because the resolution wasn't in here.
Well, it's attached to the agenda.
I tried finding the attachment. I couldn't find. All right, regardless, I am excited that we're doing this. I think it's, you know, smart. I think it's the right thing to do. I think it's in the best interest of township. You know, Eagle, it appears is kind of ready to move forward without alternatives on that wastewater treatment facility. I remember that when it, when it, learning that when it's at full capacity, there will be up to, I think, eight hundred and fifty thousand gallons pumped into there potentially on a daily basis. And I remember when I spoke at the Eagle hearing, I just, all I could think about was what that August twenty seventh flood would look like if we had an additional million gallons of water in the Fellows Creek. I know it went into coals. I know it destroyed, I mean, millions of dollars of property. It was destroyed in that. A lot, and that's our central business district in town, but additionally, that's our largest drain. I believe there are over fourteen thousand households on the Fellows Creek. It's fourteen thousand basements. And I just can't imagine another million gallons of water under a severe storm event going into those fourteen thousand basements. It is abundantly clear, Michigan and the United States of America and southeast Michigan do not have a plan yet for how to deal with what is happening to the climate and the weather. We can't solve that today. But what we can do is seek an alternative route, which is to not put that water into the Fellows Creek and potentially bypass it through Y C U A. And so I think that this resolution and this proposal is the only responsible and sober thing to do. So I'm glad that you're, it was your idea. And Madam Supervisor, I'm glad that you did that and I'm glad that you pursued that and you've used a lot of your relationships with the other electeds to move them in that advance and you've met with Eagle and and are starting to do what I think many people thought was the impossible. So I want to see this thing through and hopefully we get this solution as opposed to the alternative.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay.
Um, it just took a question and then a comment. Napier Road is the boundary between Canton and other communities, right?
Right.
But does Napier ends at Cherry Hill?
Yes.
What would happen south of Cherry Hill?
So they've, they're gonna study a couple pathways based on what we need them to do, which is probably the path of least resistance, but it would have to go south to Napier, over to Cherry Hill, down to Denton, south into Van Buren Township.
Okay.
That was one alternative they're looking at.
Okay, but they're looking at other?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, this one, I think is kind of a no-brainer. I, do I like having another community putting a pipe through Canton? No, I don't. But do I want to risk more flooding and more issues? If, if they discharge a bunch more water into the creeks? No. And I, so I think this is the best thing that we can do for, for our residents.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm curious about the broadband part of this. Is this a commitment that there will be additional fiber cable with the construction of this pipe? And how exactly, how much will it improve broadband? I'm curious as to the inclusion of that within the context of.
A few years ago, we did a broadband study in Canton Township and residents and businesses. Basically what they did is they got, they went into this app and they downloaded their speeds and uploaded. And we did find a lot of spotty areas in Canton Township. There's not fiber throughout Canton. Most of it is, is cable. There are spotted areas in Canton where A T and T has put fiber. But fiber would improve the communications network, the broadband. And so that was some of the area where we saw some spotty communications. So if we were to lay fiber, it would be, it would give the ability for the community to attach to it and hopefully improve the communications. I don't know, Victor, if you want to add to that at all.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. Yes, you are absolutely correct. When we did the broadband study, we did discover that there are pockets in the, in the township where there isn't really sufficient broadband capacity. And so we started a conversation with a public-private partnership. Now, there is a, there is a company currently that is doing some broadband improvement in the township. They've looked at the township. They've seen the potentials and we know definitely that the market is there. We want to make sure that we provide an enabling environment that they can expand throughout the entire township. Right now, what we have, as she alluded to, is basically the infrastructure that is supported for, the infrastructure for the likes of Comcast, and that is basically coax. And it does have its own limitations. And we are encouraging any would-be vendor to invest in fiber optics throughout the entire community. That, that's preferable. And so in every area such as this, we are actually saying to all the vendors, do your improvement based on fiber optics.
So we're also looking at whenever you have any construction along major areas to lay some fiber there so we could hopefully improve broadband and internet in the community.
I am. No, I, I agree with everything that's been said. I think this is a great alternative. Plus, it'll help our residents who are on septic. Hopefully, they can hook into this sewer. But flooding is a huge issue and it'll become a bigger issue. So I think this is a great alternative.
I just wanted to comment real quickly to trustee Ansari's question. Although additional stormwater capacity, broadband access, and the benefit of hooking residents who are currently on septic systems up to the sewer system are in the resolution. There is no agreement at this time on behalf of any of the parties to this, that, that that's what will take place. This resolution is just to support a feasibility study, to study other feasible routes for, for this sewer system to go.
Thanks for the clarification.
Anyone else, Dave, would you like to add to it or? Like to? All right, thank you. Now we have a motion on the floor. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. At the same time, we're doing this, Plymouth Township is also voting on the resolution for their portion tonight. All right, thank you. Now we have, so we don't have Senator Dana Polhankey today. Now we do have time for public comment on agenda items only. Public comment on agenda items only. If you would like to go up for three minutes and we'll listen to your public comment. And we can respond, you know, maybe after the meeting right now, but just this is to listen to you and hear your opinions on some of the things we're gonna vote on. Anybody in the room? Okay, let me look online. You have anybody? Okay, anyone online? You want to raise your hand? Nope, seeing none. Okay, great, thank you. Public comment on agenda items only is closed. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from past meetings?
Madam Supervisor, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the minutes as presented from the meeting that occurred on February eleven, two thousand and twenty five and February eighteen, two thousand and twenty five.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by trustee Berninski. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Now we have Treasurers report and payment of bills.
Madam Supervisor, I motion that we pay the bills.
Port please?
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by trustee Berninski. All in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Now we have the consent calendar.
You've left me in the dust.
Sorry. Tried to talk slowly that last sentence. Okay, are there any discussion, any of the, any of the items? Okay, on the next one, it's okay.
Okay.
Any discussion on the bills? Minutes? I'm killing time.
All right, sorry about that.
Oh, no.
We got this software that
It's new.
is making things faster. Ma'am Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the consent calendar as presented. Item C one, request renewal of V M software support agreement. Item C two, request budget amendment for the carryover of fiscal year two thousand and twenty four open purchase orders to fiscal year two thousand and twenty five. C three, consider award of C D B G housing rehabilitation contract. C four, consider second reading of amendments to the Code of Ordinances to amend several sections related to sewer use and industrial waste pretreatment requirements for users discharging to the Ypsilanti Community's Utility Authority wastewater treatment plant. C five, consider approving the purchase of various water main parts from Core and Main L P. C six, approve purchase of water main repair clamps from Core and Main. C seven, consider purchase of water meters and metering control devices. C eight, consider approval of the purchase of five vehicles for police services with the associated budget amendment. C nine, consider approval of the purchase of one two thousand and twenty five Ford F four fifty stake truck and one two thousand and twenty five Ford F four fifty dump truck for parks. C ten, consider approval of the purchase of two two thousand and twenty five Ford Maverick hybrids for building services. C eleven, consider awarding a contract and purchase order for the upgrade of the air track lighting at the Village Theater at Cherry Hill. Item C twelve, consider awarding a contract and purchase order to remove and replace the carpeting at the administration building.
Court.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Discussion?
Can't do discussion on.
By your time. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. The next item is consider authorizations of the 2025 FY specialized services operating assistance program agreement with SMART.
Alright. Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the fiscal year 2025 specialized services operating assistance agreement between SMART and the Charter Township of Canton for eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars. And to authorize the township supervisor to sign the contract on behalf of the township pending legal review.
Right. Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. So the township submitted its annual specialized services application with SMART to provide funding for the Canton Mobility Transportation Program. SMART has notified the township that it is eligible for eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars under the program from October 1st, 2024 through September 30th, 2025. Community Development is requesting authorization of the agreement to receive the available funds for the specialized services operating assistance program with SMART, pending legal review. So just as a quick summary, so the grant is equal to the allocation Canton secured in previous years. The contract covers from October 2024 through September 2025. And the funds are in addition to the ninety-two thousand, three hundred and forty dollar municipal credit, credit grant awarded to the township for fiscal year 24. In addition, in addition, the Fairbox revenue collector from the program riders in 24 was thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars. The total annual contract with the Nanket Transit Commission to provide transportation services will not exceed four hundred and twenty-three thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars. So Director Lafever, do you want to add anything?
Oh, I think you've covered it quite well. Happy to take any questions off.
Thank you. So this currently services a lot of, how many trucks are servicing us, working with us?
Uh, so we have fifteen different buses that you'll see driving around town. So there's the smart buses, uh, so that's through our Canton Mobility Transportation Program. And, uh, yeah, fifteen buses, there's five at any given time in Canton on the road, providing rides to probably about between thirteen hundred and fourteen hundred riders in, in Canton.
Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I'm always happy to support this because that program supports people that may not have other ways to get to doctor's appointments or shopping or whatever they need. So I, I am very happy to support this.
Anyone else? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Item G2, request approval to upgrade the township's phone system and service provider.
Madam Supervisor, I move to permit the Information Technology and Innovation Department to contract with CDW government to upgrade the township's phone system and allow the Information Technology and Innovation Department to create purchase orders to CDW for implementation services, sixty-five thousand dollars, and VMware software licenses, five thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars. And to approve a three-year service contract with AirSpring facilitated by CDW and to waive the requirement of publishing a request for proposal because the pricing provided by CDW government is derived from the state of Michigan pricing schedule.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. ITI is budgeted to implement and upgrade the township's end-of-life telecommunication, telecommunications system, which has been in place since 2018. The system upgrade includes hardware, software licenses, a session-initiated protocol service provider agreement and implementation. The board approved the procurement of the replacement hardware late last year, and ITI is now requesting to contract with an implementation specialist and to purchase the necessary software licenses and phone service. So basically, at that time, so in 2018, the township upgraded its phone system. At that time, the Cisco phone system was the only solution that met the stringent requirements for the police department to remain CEGIS compliant while converting to a voice-over IP solution. In preparation for an upgrade in 2425, ITI researched the possibility of moving the phone system to a cloud-hosted solution. However, the conclusion of that investigation determined that the township's phone system must remain on-premise to remain CEGIS compliant. So Director Abegboud, do you want to add anything?
Um, I'll be willing to answer questions. Thank you, Madam Supervisor.
Any comments or questions? Okay.
Yeah, I just, um, wanted to make sure everyone knew that, um, right now we're paying month to month for this service and with this new, um, provider, it will be actually cheaper for us, so I am very glad about that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Fighting news.
All in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion passes. G3, consider approval of a purchase order to Carrie and Paul Group for entertainment and sound at the Thursday Night Live Concert Series and Community Special Events.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve a purchase order for Carrie and Paul Group in an amount not to exceed eighteen thousand dollars to provide entertainment and professional sound services for the 2025 Thursday Night Live Concert Series and Community Special Events.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by, is it me? Trustee, uh, Trustee Berninski. Canton Leisure Services requests approval of a purchase order to Carrie and Paul Group to provide entertainment and professional sound services for the 2025 Thursday Night Live Concert Series and Community Special Events. Lots of fun. Canton Leisure Services utilizes Carrie and Paul Group services to book entertainment for various community events. In 24, Leisure Services expanded the role of Carrie and Paul Group to include professional sound services for this long-standing summer concert tradition with significant success. To help build upon the quality and consistency this provided, the staff requested the bidding process be waived and a purchase order to Carrie and Paul Group be approved with a total fee not to exceed eighteen thousand dollars. So they've been the preferred contract for twenty years, providing services for numerous events. The remaining balance will cover bands and performance, performers at other special events, including the Liberty Fest and Tuesdays are terrific. Let's see, Director, uh, no, Director Lafever, do you want to add anything?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. Just a note that they're not our sole provider, but they do provide many of our events. So they're one of our go-tos. So this is a blanket purchase order that we will use throughout the year for, for various events, not just at Thursday Night Concert Series, but Liberty Fest and many other events as well.
And of course, I had spoken to you earlier that if other bands wanted to apply, they still could. It's not just these bands that, that play.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we encourage anybody to refer bands to our, um, our website. There's actually an application form that they can submit. We like to get links and videos so that we can check bands out ahead of time before they're booked. So that's right on our website there.
Are Carrie and Paul the band or is it a company that recruits bands?
They're, they're agents. They're entertainment agents.
Alright, just curious.
Thank you. Anyone else? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Item G4, consider first reading of an amendment to Appendix A, zoning of the Code of Ordinances for Everbrook rezoning.
Madam Supervisor, I move to introduce and hold the first reading of planning application number 120-RZ-8508, which rezones three subject parcels from RR Rural Residential to R2 Single Family Residential as a proposal meets the standards of section 27.06 of section D4 of the zoning ordinance as stated in the Planning Commission's motion and move to, well, I'm not gonna do that last one. That's it.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The applicant proposes to rezone three parcels located on the north side of Geddes Road between Bar Road and Denton Road from RR Rural Residential to R2 Single Family Residential. The subject area of the parcels is about 1.58 acres and they contain two single-family residences. The applicant proposes to assemble the three subject parcels with several parcels to the west, north, and east that are currently zoned R2 and construct a 514-unit residential active adult community for residents age fifty-five and older on the 230.54 acre site. The rezoning application is not conditioned on the conceptual layout plan, and the site layout and number of units will be determined during the special land use review and site plan review processes. At its meeting on February 3rd, 2025, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the rezoning application. Remember, this is a rezoning only, not approval of the site plan at all, just rezoning. Um, Director Norwood, do you want to add anything?
Thank, thank you, Madam Supervisor. I don't have anything to add, but however, Community Planner Patrick Stone is also here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Patrick, do you want to add anything?
Um, sure, just a little bit of information to reiterate what we discussed during the February 3rd Planning Commission meeting, um, as well as, um, to follow up on some of the items that were noted in terms of, uh, the application itself is a rezoning of three subject parcels and not, um, an action or even an indication on a pending or future development proposal. The proposal in this application is to rezone three parcels, um, to the R2 zoning district. And the purpose of the rezoning is to combine the parcels with adjacent parcels that are part of a pending, uh, special land use and preliminary site plan application for a development called Everbrook. The Everbrook application is just over two hundred and thirty acres and, uh, five hundred and fourteen proposed units. The, uh, proposed zoning site is 1.58 acres, so it represents less than one percent of the overall proposed development area of Everbrook. The importance of these parcels, um, is, is to allow for a continuous frontage along the north side of Geddes Road. On the Everbrook plans that I'll go into in a moment, there's a area along the north side of Geddes Road that is indicated as, uh, floodplain storage area as well as landscaping. And if the subject parcels are rezoned and combined with contiguous parcels, then the Everbrook application would show a continuous frontage in this area to allow, um, um, an unbroken continuous area on the north side of Geddes for that proposed water storage area and landscaping. So that is mostly the significance of these subject parcels. They're not necessarily needed for density or for units. For the application itself, uh, the application is made by Pulte Homes, and Pulte is not the property owner, but, uh, Pulte has received written authorization from the property owners to make the rezoning on their behalf. And on our rezoning application, which is included, it has an area where, uh, the applicant, uh, puts in their name, and then if the owner is different than the applicant, then the owner has to indicate so and also provide written authorization for the non-owner applicant to make the application. So those, uh, proper documents were, uh, received and are in the packet. And when the applicants put in the public notice signs on the properties, they indicated Pulte Homes as the applicant. Um, as noted, um, section 27.06D4 of the zoning ordinance consists of ten standards of review to be considered prior to an action. And these ten standards are just for the rezoning itself. So the question of rezoning the three subject parcels to R2, and does that application just for that 1.58 acres comply with the ten standards of review? Based on our staff analysis, um, we believe that the application does fulfill the ten standards of review. And in the Planning Commission's motion on February 3rd, it also indicated, um, agreement that the rezoning application met those ten standards of review. A couple of the standards that I'd like to go over, um, relate to both the master plan and the conceptual development plan that was included. Uh, whenever there's a rezoning application that's proposed, the zoning ordinance requires a plot plan that contains details about the site as well as a proposed layout plan. And it's not a condition of the rezoning. Uh, this is a standard rezoning application, not a conditional rezoning application. So, um, the township can't ask for conditions and conditions can't be part of any kind of, uh, motion or action. The development plan is just conceptual, uh, just to indicate intent by an applicant or a property owner in terms of what they propose to do if the rezoning application is successful. The applicant has also applied for special land use review and preliminary site plan review for Everbrook, and that, uh, application review is pending by staff. Those applications are not yet complete enough to bring forward to the Planning Commission for a public hearing on the special land use. But once they are complete, there will be a public hearing to, in front of the Planning Commission for a special land use for an application that's called an active adult, active adult community or an AAC. An active adult community is a type of development in the zoning ordinance that allows for, um, a piece of property, at least one hundred acres in size and appropriately zoned to, uh, develop as an age-restricted community. And the proposed development for Everbrook is a proposed fifty-five and older community. One of the important items to note about the active adult community standards is density. In the R2 district, uh, the standard zoning is typically two units per acre. In the zoning ordinance, active adult communities in the R2 district can be up to four units per acre if there is sewer capacity in the system. With the application that's proposed for the active adult community by, uh, Pulte, uh, the proposed density is 2.3 units per acre, which is more than the standard R2 zoning, but far less than the maximum allowed in the active adult community standards. At this point, we can't make any affirmative findings on the proposed density just because a lot of the density is tied to sewer capacity as well as other public infrastructure, uh, such as roads, water, and stormwater. Those are findings that will be made during the development proposal application review through special land use permit review as well as preliminary site plan review. And there will be engineering findings that go along with those. So that's just to give a little bit of information in terms of the, uh, development intent, the proposed density, and a couple of the standards for the active adult community. The reason that the zoning ordinance allows for higher densities for active adult communities is typically because, uh, there's less use of, uh, public infrastructure and resources, uh, especially with regard to road capacity where there's not as many trips during the AM and PM peak times like there would be with a non-age-restricted community where there's the morning and evening commuters. The conceptual development plan that's included also shows forty-one percent open space, which is almost ninety-three acres. It shows three access points to the site, uh, two from Geddes Road, one from Denton Road. The proposed rezoning with respect to the master plan is consistent with the future land use map. The future land use map classifies the site as low-density residential, which is up to two units per acre. Uh, the proposed R2 zoning is consistent with the future land use map, um, and with the zoning of surrounding properties. The proposed zoning is consistent with existing land uses on surrounding properties. Uh, the land to the north is the Hamlets, land of the south is Grandview, and there are existing single-family residences along Geddes Road that will continue. If the proposed rezoning is approved, the current lots and homes will comply with most requirements of the proposed R2 zoning classifications, which would be confirmed on a development application. The last standard of review, the tenth standard, is if a rezoning is requested, what is the impact on township infrastructure? Uh, this is something that we look at in general for a rezoning in terms of the classification of the district. It's something we look at in more detail when there's a special land use application or a site plan application where we can look into, uh, the specific number of units, the engineering, uh, the details of the traffic study. But a couple of the things that we can make comments on are, uh, with respect to the roads, there has been a traffic study that's been prepared by Fleas and Vanderbrink and submitted by the applicant. And, uh, the study concludes that the intersections that are studied are expected to operate acceptably, which is a level of service D or better during the AM and PM peak periods, uh, subject to installing an eastbound left turn lane on Geddes Road at the West Site Drive. Therefore, the traffic study does not recommend any additional mitigation measures. However, the traffic study still has to be removed, reviewed by Canton's traffic engineering consultant, and any questions or concerns, uh, will be addressed during special land use review and site plan review, uh, regarding that traffic study. For the natural features findings, uh, the three subject parcels do not contain any floodplains or wetlands, even though the larger development area does. And the larger development area, um, has been studied by, uh, the applicant and will be, continued to be studied as they proceed with the application process for their active adult community development. and will be continued to be studied as they proceed with the application process for their active adult community development. Finally, with respect to the public infrastructure, we have some comments on the stormwater management. The development plan that's submitted for Everbrook, in this regard, it's a conceptual development plan. But it shows the proposed stormwater management, which includes expansion of the regional basin located northeast of the site as well as three new basins on the development site. The basins are proposed outlet northward to Fowler Creek. Also, the conceptual development plan proposes two relief culverts on the north side of Geddes Road between Bar and Denton Road. These relief culverts are to allow for drainage from the ditch on the north side of Geddes Road to go northward under the proposed sidewalk and into the development site of Everbrook in an area that's classified on the conceptual plan as additional floodplain storage area. This is more of an engineering issue in terms of how that will work. So we'll defer the comments on that to Wayne County and Canton Township Engineering Division. But there is an effort there in that part of the site to alleviate some of the stormwater conditions that exist currently along the north side of Geddes Road. So that concludes our staff comments and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thanks, very thorough. I did watch the planning commission meeting. If anyone wants to watch it, it's very informative. Thank you, Patrick. Any questions or comments? They did show a picture of the, if you want to look at it, the, actually the Fowler Creek with the blockages that they did find and that they did say they would help alleviate those also.
I was just gonna say with respects to the rezoning, I mean, it's consistent with the future land use map and kind of what we expected to see in that area. I think speaking about the, you know, future potential uses for the property, definitely think it's a much more attractive option than individuals who've been looking at those parcels in the past. So I'm very excited and look forward to seeing that that come down the bike. And then some of the improvements that are talked about with regards to stormwater management is really welcome. And so, yeah, it makes sense.
Thank you. Okay.
Yes. Joe? Can you explain about what happens if a property meets all of the standards and findings of fact in the in the zoning ordinance?
What do you mean when you asked what?
Well, like, can we deny?
Yes. But that would, it would put the township in a probably a compromised legal position if the township did deny and all the legal standards were met for the, for the proposed rezoning.
Okay. I understand.
I, yeah, I just wanted to, like Michael had said, you know, this is what the master plan is showing, the R two, you know, we're, this is just a question on the zoning, so I'm in agreeance.
Nora, did she have anything?
Just to appreciate you, Patrick, for all the work that you've been doing on this. I know that there's been a lot of back and forth with community on, and we'll have a lot of other zoning issues on the agenda later too. But in general, I've seen that you've faced a lot of questions. So just wanna appreciate you doing the best that you can. And your team has been doing the best that they can in addressing people's questions and in navigating all of this. So appreciate you for that. This is also like probably a lot more complicated than we think it is. So wanna also appreciate you explaining all of this to us so that we have a better understanding of what we're actually looking at. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All in favor of the motion on the table, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you. The next one is consider first reading of an amendment to Appendix A zoning of the code of ordinances for CISO and IMAC properties, CESO and IMAC properties LLC rezoning.
Madam Supervisor, I move to introduce and hold the first reading of planning application number four nine R Z eight five zero nine, which rezones four subject parcels from M R D Mid Rise Development District and Corporate Park Overlay District to C three Regional Commercial District and C B P Central Business District Overlay as the proposal meets the standards of section twenty seven point zero six D four of the zoning ordinance as stated in the planning commission's motion.
Support. Motion made by Clerk Seager, supported by Trustee Brindinsky. The applicant proposes to rezone four parcels from M R D Mid Rise Development and Corporate Park Overlay District, C P O D, to C three Regional Commercial District and C B D Central Business District Overlay. The parcels are located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Ford and Lots Road. The subject parcels total approximately two point four or five acres. If the parcels are rezoned to C three and C B D overlay, the applicant proposes a development that includes an automobile filling multi-use station, subject to planned development district review. Automobile filling multi-use stations are special land uses in the C four district. So the applicant intends to submit a P D D application for an automobile filling multi-use station if the proposed rezoning is approved. The P D D standards in section twenty seven oh four of the zoning ordinance allow all uses authorized in the zoning ordinance to be considered except uses exclusively found in industrial districts. The proposed rezoning, if approved, is not an indication of whether future P D D use approval is likely or desirable. At its meeting on February third, two thousand and twenty five, the planning commission recommended approval of the rezoning application. Director Norwood, do you want to add anything?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. I don't have anything to add. However, the County Planner Patrick Stone is here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Do you want to add anything?
Sure, thank you. I'll give a somewhat similar presentation as.
Breaking water, you might need it.
Oh, yeah, I just did, actually. I'll have a similar presentation as the previous one because there are some similarities just in terms of the proposal, the proposed use and concept plan, expanding on that a little bit and then coming back just to what we're here to decide on, which is the rezoning itself. Starting with the application itself, the applicant for the rezoning proposal is CESO. And similar to the previous application, CESO is not the property owner. They're the applicant. They filled out the application for the rezoning. And IMAC Properties is the property owner. And IMAC Properties signed the application and provided a letter giving CESO consent to apply for this rezoning on their behalf. And so similar to the rezoning signs in the previous Pulte case, on this particular rezoning sign, it was CESO because CESO is the applicant. And both the rezoning application and the letter of authorization from the owner for CESO to make the application are included in the packet. And we wanted to go over that part because during the public hearing portion and public comment, there were some concerns raised of who the applicant was. And there were some issues raised in terms of some allegations that the proper applicant wasn't named on the sign. And so as we get through the standards, we'll get through the standards. But before getting through those, we want to just make sure that proper procedure is followed, which it is. And we want the public to know that the proper procedures are being followed and that the right paperwork and the right authorizations are being handled as part of the application. So we made a similar presentation at the February third Planning Commission meeting just to affirm that the proper names and entities were on the application and on the rezoning sign. And then that brings us into the prospective user, the prospective end user is Sheets Gas Station. And that name was discussed quite a bit during the February third Planning Commission meeting. And there was a representative of Sheets at the meeting to talk about the prospective development. So Sheets has been open about their intent on the property. But Sheets is not necessarily named on the rezoning application or as a property owner. So in the context of the zoning review, we don't really mention Sheets, not to conceal the name, but because it's not really that important when it comes to the owner, the applicant and some of the items that are part of the application, such as the ten criteria of rezoning. However, we do acknowledge that the concept plan that was submitted does show a proposed automobile filling and multi-use station. And we do make comments about that in our staff review. So when Sheets was in attendance at the February third Planning Commission meeting, they had given a presentation, they had answered questions from the planning commission about their intent on the property. And so what we did with that application is we talked about just the rezoning itself, which was rezoning four parcels to C three. But then with the concept plan, being able to expand a little bit in terms of looking at development intent, talking to the end user a little bit and holding the public hearing. At the end of that, we're able to kind of come back to just the rezoning itself. It's good to have a discussion about questions, comments, concerns about the end user, the end use development of the site. And then ultimately just looking at the application for what it is, which is whether the four subject parcels should be rezoned to C three with Central Business District Overlay without regard to any indications of whether the prospective user or proposed use is desirable or likely to even happen. But within the context of the concept plan, it allows us to have the discussion with the applicants, and in this case, the end user, and talk about some of the prospective uses for the site. A little history on this site. In two thousand and twenty three, the owners of the four subject parcels had applied to rezone these parcels to C four interchange service district. And that application was denied by the Board of Trustees and the Planning Commission recommended denial of the application. Staff had also recommended denial of that application on the grounds of the master plan as well as the other ten criteria. I won't go through that previous application, but we, in that application and the staff review, we did express support for a proposed C three district with C B D overlay zoning. And we'll provide those reasons in a minute in terms of what the master plan's recommendations for the site are. The use proposed by the applicant is an automobile filling and multi-use station. This use is not permitted in the C three district and is only permitted as a special land use in the C four interchange service district. If the parcels are rezoned to C three and Central Business District Overlay, the applicant proposes to apply for a P D D for an automobile filling and multi-use station. The P D D standards of the zoning ordinance allow for all uses authorized in the zoning ordinance to be considered except uses exclusively found in industrial districts. While the proposed rezoning, if approved, is not an indication of whether a future P D D use approval is likely or desirable, we have some initial comments in our analysis in the context of the information that's been provided. Also, a rezoning cannot be approved with conditions unless such conditions are offered by the applicant for consideration by the township. And also, although the concept plan is included, it's illustrative only and not proposed as a condition or as a separate application at this point. In terms of the ten conditions that are required by section twenty seven point zero six of the zoning ordinance, one area that we want to point out is in the comprehensive plan. Whenever someone applies for a rezoning, the first thing that we always look at is the comprehensive plan and the future land use map. In this case, our comprehensive plan is very specific for this site. On page sixty four of the current comprehensive plan, it includes the Lots Road corridor zoning strategies. And the next three points I want to mention that are directly from the master plan. Point one is to repeal the remaining portion of the Corporate Park Overlay District guidelines and amend the map exhibit to remove remaining effective areas subject to the guidelines in section six point zero eight of the zoning code. The subject site has the Corporate Park Overlay District on it and the master plan supports repeal and removal of the Corporate Park Overlay District. We're in agreement with that and there have been rezonings recently to remove parcels in this area out of the Corporate Park Overlay District. But we've been taking an incremental approach to removing parcels rather than a wholesale approach at this point of removing the entire district. The second point noted in the master plan is to amend the boundaries applicable to the Central Business District Guidelines in section six point ten of the zoning code to include the area within the D D A on the north side of Ford and south side of Ford to Willow Creek Drain. So that specifically identifies this site to remove the Corporate Park Overlay and add the Central Business District Overlay. Finally, the third point in the master plan, it states encourage a change of zoning for the area located south of Ford Road and north of the Willow Creek Drain between Lots Road and I two seventy five from M R D Mid Rise Development to C three Regional Commercial. In many cases, a comprehensive plan is not always that specific with a piece of property. So it's fairly unusual for a comprehensive plan to be this specific in terms of what a property should be zoned as. So this is a rezoning application that has a lot of support in the text of the master plan. When the rezoning is proposed, the zoning ordinance requires a concept plan be submitted. And the applicants have submitted a concept plan, which the Sheets representatives went over at the February third Planning Commission meeting. And we include some findings and some notes in our analysis in terms of some initial comments on the plan without regard to whether we support the plan, whether we would indicate any support for the plan, just general comments based on what we see based on the concept. A couple of items that we point out is with the access management. Their concept plan shows three access points, two at Lots Road, one on Ford Road through Al Smith Avenue. The access from Ford Road is right in, right out only. We might recommend only one access from Lots Road, which we recommend being located as far south as possible and away from that Ford Road intersection. Alignment with the opposing driveway on the east side of Lots Road would be recommended, subject to traffic engineer review. We also recommend extending a driveway west of the site to access a future proposed traffic signal at the intersection of the proposed top Canton facility. The site access is subject to change based on the traffic impact study, which has been submitted by the applicants. The traffic impact study has not yet been fully reviewed by the township's traffic engineering consultant. So we don't have any initial findings from Wai Trim on the traffic impact study submitted by the applicants. But that study is currently under review. Another aspect is consistency with the comprehensive plan and the future land use map. On the future land use map of the comprehensive plan, the site is classified as general commercial. And policy one point two point three of the plan states, quote, establish a general commercial land use designation on the future land use map for regional and highway oriented commercial uses. Regional commercial uses generally serve the retail and service needs for the entire township and adjacent areas and include larger multi-tenant shopping centers with large anchor tenants located on primary arterial roadways that carry high volumes of traffic. Highway oriented commercial uses should be located within a one mile radius of a freeway interchange and provide uses convenient to the traveler or overnight visitor in the community. Although that text is consistent with the C three and C four zoning districts, the Lots Road quarter zoning strategies support the C three zoning and the C B D overlay. Canton is currently in the process of updating its comprehensive plan. We're maybe two to three months out from having something that's ready for amendment. So these policies from the master plan are from our current master plan that was last adopted in two thousand and seventeen. Regarding the precedent of rezonings, in two thousand and twenty four, there were two rezoning applications approved on the east side of I two seventy five from the Corporate Park Overlay to the C three and Central Business District Overlay. So there have been two applications in recent memory that have attained the same zoning that's proposed by the applicants in this case. If the rezoning is requested, all requirements of the proposed zoning class could be complied with on the subject parcel, which would be subject to a development application. But based on the setbacks, a development of some type could fit on the property under the C three and the Central Business District Overlay. And finally, if a rezoning is requested, is the proposed zoning consistent with trends in land development in the general vicinity? It is based on some of the multi-tenant retail, some of the big box retail and the general commercial uses in the area. So a zoning of C three and Central Business District Overlay is consistent with the surrounding land uses. And again, these findings are made without respect to the proposed end use of a filling station and multi-use station. We do understand the proposed use and the intent there. And the applicants intend to file a P D D application if the rezoning is successful. But we are just looking at the proposed rezoning and the standards of the C three and Central Business District overlays. But we are just looking at the proposed rezoning and the standards of the C three and central business district overlays. So that concludes our staff report for the proposed rezoning application, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. We'll start on that. Amr, do you have any questions?
I was curious, one of the concerns that I had heard was around the traffic. And when I looked at the traffic study too, I was curious, since you also made it very clear that this was just like an initial phase. This is just a conversation about allowing for rezoning and whether Sheets or whoever comes in is a different conversation, even though they were present at the Planning Commission meeting. But could you explain a little more about what that traffic flow will look like? If, let's say, this were to be amended, what does that? Because there were some recommendations based on the traffic study that were presented in the packet. So could you elaborate on that a little bit?
Sure. The traffic study was done by Fleece and Vanderbrink, and that was the same firm that prepared the study for the Top Canton development, which includes the proposed Top Golf, the proposed Chick-fil-A and the Portillo's. And in the Top Canton development, there was a proposal to add a traffic light at its main site driveway from Ford Road. And that traffic light would alleviate a lot of concerns that were in the traffic study for the Top Canton development. Now, with a recent denial by Eagle of a wetland permit for Top Canton, there's some unknowns going forward in terms of how that project will proceed. So the traffic study in this case has some assumptions. And one of them is that if the Top Canton site is developed, that light's installed, that's part of the overall equation of what they look at in the traffic analysis. What we don't know is that if that traffic light, for some reason, wasn't installed or if a project happened on this site before a project happened on the Top Canton site, what would the traffic look like? There's, so there's some major questions that are out there regarding the traffic study and the sequence of developments and the traffic improvements of how that would fit for this particular site. Also, the traffic study assumes some signal timing changes at the light at Ford and Lots. And there would have to be some significant signal timing changes to be able to achieve the level of service that's indicated in the traffic study. And then finally, kind of outside of the traffic study, one of the concerns that we had noted with the concept plan was potential impacts of traffic going to the intersection of Ford and Lots. And the way that it's laid out with the concept plan of the right and right out only at Al Smith, that would mean that any outbound trips from the site that are going back to the highway all would have to take a left on the Lots Road to get to the light. That was something that we raised as just a staff level concern. I'm not a traffic engineer or any kind of an engineer, but just from the planning standpoint, in terms of looking where those trips go, those are some big picture things that I will raise in a letter like this and also indicate to our traffic engineering consultant when they're looking it over. So there's some future access management concerns that we have. But in the general scope of the traffic study, there are some assumptions made in terms of improvements that were indicated as part of a Top Canton development. And our traffic engineering consultant is still in the process of looking through that. So we should be hearing something within a matter of, hopefully, within a week or two in terms of what the outcome of that review is.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Patrick, for all of your explanations. The last item and this one. So I just want to make sure I have this straight. Normally, a C four zoning would not allow an automobile service station like this. It likes being proposed, is that correct?
In the C four district, the auto filling stations, there are special land uses in the district. So for a property that's zone C four today, they could apply for a gas station on C four zone property, but it would be a special land use. And the special land use criteria of the zoning ordinance are in a separate section. But there are several criteria amongst those are traffic impacts and impacts on infrastructure.
Okay. And doing a PDD or PPD would allow any, like any, basically any use except for that industrial type use?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And also, in a PDD, there's more discretion from the township standpoint in terms of negotiating the plan and the development?
Yep. No, I appreciate all the work you put into this, Patrick, and I listened to the meeting as well. A lot of great questions were asked, but I know the question to us is the rezoning. And so you're, I've gotten all my answers or all my questions answered, so thank you.
Michael?
So I'm not a planner or a lawyer, so I don't necessarily understand that. So what you're saying is, in a mid-rise development district, an automobile service station is not allowed. That's correct.
Correct.
And in a C three district, which the proposal tonight is to rezone the mid-rise development district to a C three district, the same service station is also not allowed. However, it is allowed in a C four district, provided it's a special land use. It can be done in a C three district if it's done through a PDD, because that's kind of like the wild card, right? Like you play the PDD and we get a lot of discretion in the planning process. But then anybody who wants to develop that parcel gets to pretty much do anything other than industrials. Is my understanding elementary but mildly correct?
Yeah, so we had thought about that several months ago in terms of how the end user and the applicants would proceed with an application. And one of the questions was, they could file a PDD today without the rezoning for a proposed use. And one of the reasons that we recommended doing the rezoning first was that there's consistency with the master plan in terms of the C three and the central business district overlay. And if the applicants go forward with a automobile filling station, in the master plan, there is some language about areas within one mile of an interchange providing highway services. Also, in the C three district, there are special land uses for redeveloping existing gas stations and building new gas stations that are affiliated with a retail use of 50,000 square feet or greater. A recent example is the BJ's, where it was affiliated with the store. So the two cases in which a C three would allow for a gas station, both a redevelopment of an existing one and one affiliated with a retail use 50,000 square feet, that doesn't qualify in this case. But there's some supportive language in the C three district where we do have them. And also, with the area being one mile within an interchange and being more consistent with the master plan with zoning, it makes the PDD application a little bit easier to review when the underlying zoning is good. Good in the sense as consistent with the master plan. And finally, we also think about if, for some reason, a PDD is not successful or if a, an application for an automobile filling and multi-use station, if that's not approved for whatever reason, having the property that's owned C three and central business district overlay will allow a number of uses that are both permitted and special land uses where the developer could have a lot more predictability in use and development than they could in the current corporate park overlay district.
Hey. You answered my question well, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so this is a rezoning, and as you said, special land uses and PDD is in another meeting moving forward if this passes. Okay. All right, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes, thank you. Next item is C six, consider first reading of an amendment to appendix A, zoning of the Code of Ordinances for SRB servicing LLC rezoning.
Madam Supervisor, I move to introduce and hold the first reading of planning application number four nine dash RZ dash eight five one zero, which rezones four subject parcels from, wait a minute. Oh, no.
Yes. I'm sorry, G six, I meant G.
G six, yeah. Yeah, and the it's the same, it's the same motion as G five. Or are just the facts?
It's, it's very, it's down low. It's, it's very, it's just down there.
I always like a happy pace here, it's the facts are almost.
It's not changing to a
Okay. So I'm so, I've got so many acronies spinning through my head, I have no idea what's going on. All right. MRD mid-rise development district and corporate park overlay district to MRD district without the corporate park overlay district as a proposal meets the standards of section 27.06 D four of the zoning ordinance as stated in the Planning Commission's motion.
Support. Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The applicant proposes to rezone four vacant parcels from MRD mid-rise development district and corporate park overlay district to MRD without the C corporate park overlay district. The parcels are located on the west side of Lots Road between Ford Road and Cherry Hill Road, just south of Willow Creek. The parcels are directly across Lots Road from Spring at Willow's Creek, which is a multifamily residential development currently under construction. The applicant proposes to develop a 280-unit multifamily residential project that will include a mix of adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities and newer typical residents. At its meeting on February third, 2025, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the rezoning application. Director Norwood, do you want to add anything?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor, I don't have anything to add. Commute Planner Patrick Stone is here to answer any questions.
Two hundred and eighty units, correct?
Correct, two hundred and eighty.
Thank you. Patrick, do you want to add anything?
Sure, just a few comments, and it won't be as detailed as the last couple of applications, although it's very similar in the sense that it's a rezoning. And essentially, what the applicants want to do is remove the corporate park overlay from the site, but to retain the underlying mid-rise development district. In looking at the master plan, there are two specific policies that are written in the master plan that we're following in our recommendation, which is to recommend approval of this proposed rezoning. The first is in policy 1.5.3 on page thirty-seven. It states, the Lots Road corridor, south of the Willow Creek Drain, shall allow for consideration of single-family attached R six office and mid-rise development zoning. So it's very specific there about the mid-rise development area. And the second policy is the Lots Road corridor zoning strategies on page sixty-four. And it states to repeal the remaining portion of the corporate park overlay district guidelines and amend the map exhibit to remove remaining effective areas subject to the guidelines in section 6.08 of the zoning code. So these two areas taken together is it supports retaining the existing MRD zoning and removal of the corporate park overlay zoning. The concept plan that's been submitted by the applicant shows twenty residential buildings at fourteen units each, which is 280 units on a site that's approximately 25 acres. So this comes out to a density of about 11.3 units per acre. This is within the maximum density limits of a PDD, which is 12 units per acre for multifamily uses and the MRD zoning district. The MRD zoning district is a very high-density residential district. So even the density that's indicated on the concept plan is consistent with that district. In the MRD district, multifamily residential uses are special land uses, and they're subject to development standards of multifamily units in the zoning ordinance. There are two access points that are proposed from Lots Road. Our understanding is that the fire code requires two points of access. And during an upcoming plan development district review, we may recommend converting one of those access points to be emergency access only, just depending on traffic flow. The site access is subject to change based on a traffic study, which has been submitted by the applicants and is currently under review by the traffic engineering consultant for Canton. There are some floodplain areas on the north side of the site and several wetland areas. The site is designed to minimize impacts on those areas, though the plan does indicate some proposed modifications from the 25-foot setback requirements from the wetland areas. The development proposes a stub road on the west side to provide access to a parcel to the west, which is landlocked. Concept plan shows 72% open space, most of which is in existing natural areas like floodplains, wetlands, and woodlands. And the concept plan shows a proposed layout for stormwater management, which includes a detention pond along Lots Road. Finally, we had noted that there has been a traffic impact study submitted. The engineer there is Collier's Engineering and Design, which is a separate firm from the firm that did the traffic studies for the CE. So rezoning and the Top Canton development. So our traffic engineering consultants are going to look at reconciling any discrepancies in data and methodology between the traffic studies and figure out how to recommend traffic impact in a future development proposal, whether it's a PDD or a special land use. In this case, there's been a PDD application submitted. So that concludes our staff report and our review of the standards, which are also in our report. And I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the board or? Okay.
Yeah, Patrick. On the attachment that we have that was the zoning aerial and future land use maps, page four. There's a diagram of the site. Are you there yet? Okay. One is like a photo, and then the other one is the, the other one is drawn. And to me, it looks like in the northeast corner, there might be a creek there. I'm wondering if that is Willow Creek.
Got an aerial map here with that layer.
I'm just, I'm just curious how, how close this site is to Willow Creek.
So Willow Creek is a little bit farther north on the, on the aerial map. On the aerial map, if you look north and east, there, there are some ponds there. And Willow Creek follows a parcel line where it's south of the Home Depot. So actually, on the aerial map where it, the site is outlined in yellow, there's a separate parcel that's north of this site, and Willow Creek is along the north side of that parcel.
Okay, do you know, did you see what I was talking about in that corner?
You want to put it up, Patrick? I don't know if you can. That would help.
It's nothing that indicates a creek, although on our, on our environmental map, it does indicate that, that northeast corner does have some floodplain and some floodway area.
Okay.
So that, that could also indicate some wetland area as well.
Right. Yeah, I'm just, because it looks like there's two lines kind of parallel to each other, so I'm wondering what that is. But my main concern was about how, you know, how close it was to Low Creek. So I guess that I don't have that concern anymore.
Anyone else? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item C seven, receive and file the Planning Commission twenty-four, 2024 annual report and 2025 work plan.
Madam Supervisor, I move to receive and file the Planning Commission 2024 annual report and 2025 work plan, which was adopted by the Planning Commission on February third, 2025, in accordance with the Michigan Planning Enabling Act.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. Okay, let me see. Michigan Planning Enabling Act, Public Act thirty three of two thousand and eight, requires the Planning Commission to make an annual written report to the Township Board concerning its operations and the status of planning activities, including recommendations regarding actions by the Township Board related to planning and development. At its meeting on February third, twenty twenty five, the Planning Commission approved the enclosed twenty twenty four annual report and twenty five work plan. Director Nora, do we, do you want to add anything?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. I think you see that the Planning Division and the Planning Commission are very busy. But also Patrick can answer any specific questions about the items that they're tackling.
Thank you. Patrick, do you want to add anything or just answer questions?
Nothing to add, happy to answer any questions now.
Any questions on the report?
Great.
Yeah, we did a lot of work. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. G eight, consider contract award and purchase orders for Arbor Master Tree Service, Arbor Cut Tree Service and PPM Tree Service and Arbor Care for tree pruning, removal and grinding services.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six tree man's bids from Arbor Master Tree Service, Arbor Cut Tree Service and PPM Tree Service and Arbor Care. And to issue purchase orders to these vendors for an amount not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars amongst all approved vendors.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The Planning Services Division receives six qualified bids for the maintenance of Canton's public trees, including pruning, removal and grinding. Planning Services Division proposes awarding contracts to the three lowest bidders to allow flexibility and increase return on investment for the different types of activities. Tree maintenance services will be awarded among the selected contractors based on price, availability and responsiveness. All three recommended contractors have also expressed interest in providing tree maintenance services to Canton homeowners associations at similar terms. The three recommended bidders received positive references and would have reduced the cost of Canton's twenty twenty four tree pruning, removal and grinding activities. The invitation to bid is for twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six with a potential for further extensions if agreeable to Canton and the vendors. Director Nora, do you want to add anything?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. I really don't have any ads, it's pretty explanatory, but this is a certainly the next evolution in the tree program. One of the items we want to have is many contractors who will help us out and also work with HOAs with their tree issues too.
Thank you.
And Patrick's here also, this is coming out of Patrick's division, so.
Yeah, we just had the study session on trees, so. All right, comments or questions?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you know, what, what I walked away from our study session on trees with was just the intentionality that the Planning Division, the overall township and embassy has put in towards like our tree canopy and the health of our environment and its benefit. And then also making sure we put the right tree in the right spot and we don't commit the same expensive mistakes of the past. And I think it's really cool that we are also extending the same kind of economies of scale pricing to some of the HOAs that want to do the right thing inside of their neighborhoods as well. So that's a really good benefit to the entire township.
Anything else? Okay.
Yes. If this passes and there are homeowners associations that are interested in, in using these services, how should they go about doing that?
They should reach out to Zach, Michelle's and Planning at this point.
Okay, thank you.
All right, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G nine, consider accepting a justice assistance grant and associated amendment to the twenty twenty five police budget.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the acceptance of a justice assistance grant for specific equipment through the US Department of Justice in the amount of ten thousand eight hundred thirty five dollars and all necessary budget amendments.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. The Canton Police Department has been awarded a justice assistance grant for specified equipment through the US Department of Justice. The JAG is listed, CDFAs listed, has been awarded to Canton in the amount of ten thousand eight hundred thirty five dollars for body worn cameras. A budget amendment to the twenty twenty five police budget is included in this request should the board choose to accept the grant. Chief Chad, do you want to add anything?
Just want to add, this was a request from the grant. The person who runs the grant with Wayne County for it to be approved by our board, so when the DOJ grants are reinitiated through the federal government, we'll be able to use this money for appropriately, so thank you.
Any comments or questions? All in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G ten, consider approval of letter of employment and retirement agreement for the Director of Fire Services.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the retirement agreement between the township and the director of fire services and the associated budget amendment.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. The Director of Fire Services, Christopher Stockline, is eligible to retire and receive his pension benefit from MERS and the township. To retain the director, the township supervisor is asking the board to approve the attached letter of employment retirement agreement between the township and the director. This agreement allows the township to set aside thirty thousand dollars in deferred compensation for the next three years to retain the director, who will retire at the end of the three year agreement. To receive the deferred compensation, the director must retire from the township after this three year period. Deputy Supervisor, do you want to add anything?
Not at this time, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, should I, I want to add some of this. So the Canton Fire Department just led everyone who was headed by Chris Stockline, Director of Fire Services and Jamie Strassner, Deputy Fire Chief. Together, they're responsible for the policies, practices, training and delivery of fire and EMS services provided at the Canton community. Fire Department is three stations staffed by three shifts consisting of battalion chiefs, captains and firefighter paramedics responding to calls for service in the community. The township is currently building a fourth fire station to serve in the southeast of Canton. Given the demands of building a new fire station and the experience of Director Stockline in building and staffing new stations in Canton, it's important to retain him during this three year period when the planning, construction and operational apparatus at the new station will be built. Director Stockline is also active in many public safety organizations throughout Michigan, currently serving as Vice President of the Michigan Fire Chiefs Association, soon to be president. He was highly involved in the recent passage of ground emergency medical transport legislation in Michigan, which will, when fully implemented, supplement Canton's fire budget by approximately five hundred thousand dollars annually moving forward. Questions or comments? Sorry.
Yes, so here in Canton, we are very lucky to have two great leaders in our public safety department. Director Ba is the best police chief in Michigan and Director Stockline is the best fire chief in Canton and in, not just Canton, sorry, in Michigan, in Michigan, and you guys are.
I'm the second oldest chief.
I know you do things, you know, outside of Michigan also, like you've gone to talk places and anyway, you're both awesome and we're lucky to have you and I think we just want to do what we can to keep both of you here.
Anyone else? Okay, great. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes, congratulations. All right, thank you. Now we have additional public comments for three minutes, if you want to come up for public comment for three minutes. What have to say?
Good evening. Dan McCawson, three two eight Hagerty Road. I was very excited to hear that talk about that potential for that stormwater regional pipe. That is probably the best news I think we've heard in a long, long time. And I think we should do everything in our power to pursue that. Hats off for you to come up with that idea. And I think this team here that you have can make that happen. I really do. I think you can spearhead that through all the other municipalities that dump the water to us and say, look, let's get together and bring that pipe all the way down and let's take the relief off the natural drain system, clean the natural drain system, because that's people's, all their anxiety is flooding. And if you could take that anxiety away, I think you'd be the person of the year in Canton. And as far as, as far as the public safety goes, there's no two better guys than are sitting right over there. You know? They set the bar that everybody else follows. When you look at the level of sophistication that those guys bring to this community, it's just outstanding. From what we started from a rural community, volunteer fire department, small number of police to where we are today. It's because of guys like that right there. Who, again, like I said the last time, they dedicate their lives to this community. Hats off and we're lucky to have them. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Online, I don't know. Oh no, no attendees, okay. All right, great administrative comments, we'll start over there. Patrick or anything, Rochelle?
No additional comments, thank you.
I'm gonna pile on based on what's been talked about for the public safety. I want to make sure I take this time to have it reflected in the record that in my department, we had a life threatening situation. And I recognize the hard work and the diligence of the public safety in saving one of my staff. I want to make sure that the record reflects that. We do appreciate it. Part of the reason why one of my staff members is alive today is because of the prompt response from public safety. And you guys, your team, you guys rock. I truly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Emma, I did, would you like to add it? No, thank you. John? Chief Chad?
I, I think I must say thank you for the kind comments and thank you for giving us the tools and the personnel to be able to carry out this mission, but I'm sure Chris will say the same thing. It's, it's our staff. And what you saw tonight with those promotions, that's our future and our future leadership and for the twenty nine years I've been here, it's because of this board and the support that they've given us to put us in this position. So, thank you.
Thank you. Director Wendy? Director Chris?
Well, I just wanted to thank you, it's very humbling. But to go even further, I, I know that I grew up here in Canton and I graduated from Canton and I've been employed here for over thirty years, starting out as a maintenance tack and a, and a billing supervisor and moving into dispatch. And so with all of that, by finally getting my dream job of being in the fire department, I will say that this is the best place to work. I mean, they, you guys, you, pass boards, everybody here in the community, you give us the tools to improve ourselves and continue moving on through our career. And that's why you have employees that are here for thirty plus years, because you treat the employees well and we recognize that and our employees recognize that. So thank you for, like Director Ba said, supporting us and being able to deliver that level of service so that we can see the outcomes that, that continue to happen. And that wouldn't happen without the support that you continue to, to do and more the citizens continue to support. And without their support, we wouldn't be able to do what we're doing. So thank you again. It's very humbling and I look forward to accomplishing a whole lot with you in the next three years.
Thank you. Director Dave? The supervisor?
I'm glad you're gonna be sticking around for three more years. You're welcome.
All right, Amara?
Hey, Amara. I just got back from a two week trip that was really, really cool for me. I went to Mecca, I did pilgrimage there. I got to visit my homeland, Pakistan. And it was a really great experience because we're heading into Ramadan next week, Inshallah, and it'll be a month that is going to be very important for me and a lot of our community members. So if I get hangry in front of y'all, that is why. I'm also going to be chasing the board to make sure that we make accommodations for prayer breaks, fast opening breaks, like anything that we need in between. So I'm looking forward to engaging with you as directors of various departments at the township and also with the rest of the community on some of this and what that looks like. So Ramadan Mubarak to everyone in our community. I also want to remind everyone that we do have public comments still open for the master plan, the draft of the master plan, that's due by March nineteenth. So, you know, that's really important so that we can get the input that we need and then have those focus groups or those listening sessions afterwards. So I do want to make sure that folks remember that. And yeah, that's, that's it for me.
Thank you, Kate.
And thank you.
So I'm enjoying the weather right now because it's been a lot warmer and a lot of the snow has melted by my house. I don't know about other people's houses. John? Do you know, is the Community Survey for Leisure Services still out?
Yes, I, I thought about that after Amara mentioned the master plan. Yeah, the parks input, the needs assessment is open and online, so we encourage all residents to go on there and complete that for us. So we've got a great response so far, but we need more. And we're looking for mass representation from throughout the community. So we're hoping people go on and fill that out. It's been blasted through our social media, so you can go on our Facebook pages and look for it. It's also on the website. So yes, thank you for mentioning it.
Thank you. I also wanted to say thank you to the, my fellow board members. I really appreciate all the support that you've given to me and, and my family.
Treasurer Slavens?
Just a reminder, we will be sending the property taxes to Wayne County March first, so we did send out delinquent notices to folks who had forgot to pay their property tax, so please try and pay it to the township so it doesn't end up going down to Wayne County. Thank you.
Clerk Seeger?
I have nothing to add.
You had so many things to add.
Well, when we were to be, congratulations to the Township Board and the administration on achieving eleven items on the consent calendar. That was one of the most impressive things I've ever seen. Is it? Oh, that's it.
Okay.
Awesome.
We did have another victory last Thursday, so Wayne Disposal had taken the communities to court to basically try to throw it out of court for the radioactive waste coming into our community. And the judge said, nope, this, this stands. So basically Canton Township, Van Buren Township, Ramulus, we were able to say that we still keep the Manhattan Waste out of Canton Township. We are pushing again for legislation to stop this from moving forward. So that was a big win. All right, great. Anything else? Ramadan Mubarak, as Amara said. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Moved.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We are adjourned. So results.